Fifty thousand and also increase to Henry County's rehab program as administered in-house, again for single-family housing rehab, for three hundred thousand totaling the five hundred and fifty thousand. Additionally, we're proposing amendments to the county's CDBGCV funds. These are the CARES funds awarded to the county for its CDBG program. We are proposing to delete funds totaling a hundred thousand due to delays in the delivery of service. This is at no fault of the sub-recipient, it's just that the calls are not coming in as frequently as they once did. And we want to ensure that these funds are distributed throughout the county and administered in a timely fashion. So, we're proposing to recapture those funds and allocate them to activities that are moving and progressing and reaching the citizens within the greatest need. We are proposing an additional four thousand to assist with services for abused and battered spouses, increasing services by thirty-six thousand to assist for services of abused and neglected children, increased services for food bank for an additional fifteen thousand, and adding a service for forty-five thousand for subsistence payments. I can leave these for a moment, I see a couple of you looking, and then I can go back to the previous slide if needed. I'm also happy to take any questions, and this is a public hearing.
Okay, so, um, any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Would you go back to your past two slides about your allocations?
The first slide is specific to the regular CDBG funds.
And your next slide?
The second slide is for the CARES funds.
Have you gotten any input from this board as to how they would like to see some of these funds allocated?
Yes ma'am, you all did give your input in June, maybe May of last year, when we presented the annual action plan. Prior to presenting that plan before you all, we also hosted the needs assessment process, which was open for about forty-five to sixty days. But, these activities were presented previously. The only changes here are to award additional funds to activities you all would have approved in June. The last one, Commissioner, you actually requested that we remove that one, and we increased the funds to the clinic, the health clinic.
Which one were the increase, which one is the increase to the health clinic?
So, let me restate. The last item on this slide where it says add Samaritans Together, we removed them at your request, back in June if I recall correctly, to increase services for the clinic. Helping in his names?
Hands of Hope.
Hands of Hope, thank you Chair.
So, what I'm trying to determine, I know you're saying that these were allocations originally made, but now you're saying you have additional funds, correct?
No, not additional funds, there's no increase in funds.
So, these are funds that were available, and you're reallocating them?
These are funds from an agency who's not distributing activities as quickly as others. And to ensure that the federal government does not reprogram our funds, we seek to reprogram when we find that activities are not moving in a timely manner.
So, you took those funds and reallocated them out to those that are moving funds?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, not our input at the first of the year, did you get input on this reallocation?
This is the opportunity to add any additional input that you may have.
So, Chair Herrell, would you prefer for us to send an email on that request? How would you like us to do that?
This has been out for public comment additionally, just add that.
And so, did we receive this?
With the notebook, yes ma'am.
So, basically what you're doing is taking the hundred thousand dollars that African Children Fund, and you're re, just increasing to those services that we currently, that are currently part of the CBD funding.
Yes ma'am, each of these activities have already been vetted, we've already ensured eligibility, and these are also activities or service providers that we've been working with, so we know that they have the capacity to carry out the services.
And I'm not done in that, because I know you've done your homework on that. What I would like to see again, is to see something for our Help in Hands, not Help in Hands, Hands of Hope Ministry. I know that that, that group is serving the population that has no insurance at all.
Yes ma'am, and they-
They don't have any, so whoever is in that loophole that can't qualify for the reduced rates that are out there, or in-between jobs, they help that group of people. And if there were other funds available that you're moving from one person or one group to another, I would like to see some of that distribution put there as well. So, that was my reason for asking.
Understood, and the only reason I would caution is because we did award them two hundred and ten thousand in June, and I assure you, they still have significant funds remaining. I am concerned with awarding too much when we are already almost halfway through the physical year.
So, they have funds still sitting?
They have funds remaining, yes ma'am. And we will be bringing back before you all the FY twenty-two annual action plan in May, just in a few months. So, there will be another opportunity to add additional funding to them. I just can't say with confidence that they've expended enough funds to accept an additional hundred thousand when we're so close to a new annual action plan.
Okay, so this is a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed amendments. Persons wishing to speak will have three minutes each. So, if there's anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Kim Smith, I am representing Samaritans Together of Henry County, and I just wanted to first publicly thank the board and the government for what you've done to help the citizens of Henry County. We actually have two hundred people on our list, waiting as of today, who needs funding for housing and utilities. We have worked as volunteers very hard to make sure that those funds that were awarded to us were spent in an appropriate manner, and we vetted each of our, each of our clients. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the consideration of adding additional funds to Samaritans Together, because we are currently out of funding, and we would appreciate the support so that we can continue to support the residents of Henry County. Again, Kim Smith, Samaritans Together of Henry County.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Harris, have you received your reports from all of these individuals, all the companies?
Yes ma'am, we actually require quarterly reports.
Thank you.
We require monthly if it's construction-related, but quarterly for these particular agencies as they are public services.
Okay, and also notice that you put the previous amounts for some of them, so there was no previous amount to put for Samaritans Together, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you for answering my question, I'm fine, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. If there are no other public comments, I'd like to call for a motion.
To approve.
Okay, got a motion? Second from Commissioner Thomas. No additional discussion, all in favor. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask, we have a resolution authorizing full-time employment position for Chief Deputy Coroner, Mr. Donald Cleveland, who is our County Coroner.
Good evening, Madam Board. I come for you this evening, three years ago, Resolution Number nineteen dash seventeen, the board at that time approved a part-time position for a deputy coroner. Well, since then, as the county has grown, so has the population, so I come before you this evening and ask that you take that resolution and move it into a full-time position.
Was there a presentation?
Yes ma'am. Right here, this shows you the workload of the office, and we put together the time it takes per call to indicate how much time is devoted to the different type of calls that we handle each month. And the second slide here is where I have put together a plan to do away with two positions to make this one, and maybe in the future, looking at putting together a admin position.
Okay, is there any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Clemens?
This is, question is for the county manager, if this is two positions going to one, why does, why is board action required for that?
Because there was a resolution that the board approved, which only gave him a part-time position, and so that resolution will have to be rescinded for you all to create the full-time position.
So, this is two part-times just changing to one, it's not adding another, it's not adding two part-times plus a full?
Right, but the resolution called for a part-time deputy, so that has to be approved by you all to change it to a full-time, because now it will be full-time with benefits.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
So, you're not, you're not asking for an increase in your budget, you get, you get money in your budget for this position for this year?
Yes sir, I do.
Okay.
Okay. Additional questions? I'd like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approved the two positions changing to one.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Holmes. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Next are our planning and zoning items, RZ dash twenty-one dash fifteen and RZ dash twenty-one dash thirty-two public, public hearing, the specific group of Atlanta requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R three, single-family residence. Stacy?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Yes, this property before you is on the east side of Highway one thirty-eight between Flat Rock Road and Hemp Hill Road. It's indicated in green on the overhead and also in your exhibits. The current zoning of the subject property is RA Residential Agricultural. The applicant is requesting an R three, which would allow for eighteen thousand square-foot lots. We are recommending denial of R three, but approval of R two S with twenty-two thousand square-foot lots, which is more along the lines of half-acre lots. The applicant is requesting a conservation-type subdivision, and on June, excuse me, July the eighth of last year, the zoning advisory board held a hearing, and they did approve the ability to have a conservation-type subdivision with two conditions, one being that the minimum lot width would be at least eighty feet, and another that the minimum lot area would be at least thirteen thousand square feet with an average of fifteen thousand square feet, which exceeds the minimum for what one could do otherwise in conservation. So, the R two informs what we call the yield plan, and this is drawn up to indicate an R two. And it's only for the purpose of coming up with a number of lots, so the number of lots that they came up with is fifty-one. And so, under the conservation plan, they can't have any more than fifty lots, and we made that one of our zoning conditions. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request, it's thirty-eight acres altogether with fifty-one lots, we're looking at a net density of one point nine eight, future land use map supports up to two, so it is supported by our policy guide. And it is on a state route, State Route one thirty-eight. So, we are recommending approval, the zoning advisory board had recommended approval as well, because at first it was thirty-six acres, and then they added one point seven. We have two sets of recommendations from the zoning advisory board, so staff has put those recommendations together, which were largely similar anyway. And in the meantime, we've had a chance to fine-tune our conditions with input from the applicant. So, before you, at your seats, you've got to hand out for twenty conditions, and these are the twenty conditions. The highlighted conditions at your seats indicate the ones that have been modified since the zoning advisory board. I'd like to offer one additional modification for condition fifteen. The applicant has improved their elevations, the elevation drawings, which they'll include as part of their presentation, and we want to be able to allow that, for the provision, the condition to provide for that. And if that's the pleasure of the board, we recommend that there be an additional sentence for condition fifteen that would state up to twenty percent of any elevation of all homes, maybe of an accent material, including hardy plank. And when you see the elevations, it'll become more apparent. Again, there are twenty conditions that we're recommending, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
This is in District Four. Are there any questions from the board?
Chair Herrell, I'd like to go ahead and make my comments, please.
Okay, alright, this is a public hearing, persons wishing to speak in favor of the requests, including the applicant, will have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the requests will likewise have ten minutes collectively. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing the Pacific Group on the two collective zoning cases that Stacy just mentioned. The, it's been a long time, I was looking at the dates on this, it looks like it was July of twenty-one when we first got our, had our first hearing, and I know this thing is going around and around. But, the, the reason for some of the delays obviously was due to the addition of this, this center tract, which is right, out parcel, right in the middle of the property, and there was some concerns that it might be just inconsistent visually as you're going down the highway there, to have this house that kind of sticks out in the middle of the two entrances, that doesn't really tie together. So, the applicant went back, contracted to purchase that house, or that property as well, to combine it into this, to hopefully make one nice cohesive piece of property. As Stacy mentioned, we've gone back to the ZAB with, with that additional tract, we've received approvals for the conservation plan, and recommendations for approval of the zoning request. This layout also, Stacy mentioned, is, the property is subject to the highway corridor overlay, and that in and of itself forced us to go back with another change to provide this gritted street layout to comply with those requirements of, as it pertains to a residential subdivision. So, that's one of the reasons why the layout is what it is, we have two entrances in there that is required. We've made some subsequent improvements to the plan that may not be in your packet, that shows the addition of a green space area between the, the lots that back up to each other, as well as an amenity area at the backside of the property that has a pavilion, playground, and connects some walking trails that will run into the, into the open space These lots, as drawn, a majority of them are a hundred-foot wide lots, we do comply with the minimum thirteen thousand square foot, lot size average fifteen thousand, again, that is a lot larger than the, than the, the minimum lot sizes allowed by the conservation subdivision. About forty-three percent of the site we've proposed is dedicated as open space, forty percent is the, the minimum required under the conservation subdivision. And, the homes are slated to start in the high three hundreds to the four hundred range as a starting point, and these are the elevation views, the updated elevations that we have provided here. So, it's, as Stacy mentioned, one of the things that we've, we've improved, I think, by doing is adding a percentage of these homes to be all brick. The intent was for the balance of the eighty percent to be partially brick on the fronts, that's why, but, we didn't want that complete four-sided brick that looks like an institutional kind of thing, there's a couple subdivisions I could probably point you to, close by, that, that look like that. So, we wanted to give that variety, and I just, and the wording that Stacy mentioned earlier is perfect, I just want to clarify one thing, that, that he said the twenty percent, the accents were limited to twenty percent, that's as it relates to the, the front of the eighty percent houses that aren't all brick. I think he said all, all elevations would only, would be limited to twenty percent, and I think he intended to say just twenty percent on the front. But, other than that, we're, we're in agreeance with all of the conditions, we appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, we think it's going to be a great subdivision, happy to answer any questions when the time is right, but thank you again for your consideration.
If there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of the development, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Board, Mike Awad, nine-ten Highway one thirty-eight, Stockbridge, Georgia, three zero two eight one. I am the owner of the property that's right adjacent to this property, and basically it's a frontage of this property on Highway one thirty-eight. First thing I'd like to mention that I'm in support of my neighbor's right to develop his property and to gain a benefit out of it, I'm in support of the zoning department for the denial of this, the zoning for R three, and, but, I definitely oppose the zone, the approval of a conservation subdivision, and for the following reason. I understand that the developer acquired one point four acres, so as he can have more frontage, because before he didn't have any kind of frontage, but, despite the fact of having a frontage on Highway one thirty-eight, he was able to avoid the variance, but still, there is a very limited frontage for this property. The property is about two hundred feet away from a major traffic light, which is Flat Rock, and the second entrance, it's almost blocked by the DOT guardrail. So, the back of the property is actually, it's, it's, it's a big cotton Indian Creek, end up with the property about ten acres of flood zone. So, I don't see how in the proposal for an R two S, he was able to put a fifty-one lot. Theoretically, he can, but practically, he can't. That's not putting in consideration that twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty, by the DOT, it's going to be four lanes, it's not going to be two lanes anymore. So, if you push to the four lanes, that means we're pushing more houses to the back, he will only be able to put around thirty-five lots, not fifty-one lots, as he claimed. So, the approval of a conservation subdivision, we are now comparing an apple to an apple. Actually, that will defeat the purpose of having a conservation subdivision. The second thing will be the back of the property, which is going to be sixteen hundred feet, which is my property. Basically, I see that he's trying to avoid whatever's not buildable on the lot, which is the flood zone on the back, and the frontage of the property is going to be taken by the DOT, and take what's buildable, and put clusters of houses along sixteen hundred square feet, with only fifty feet buffering zone between his property and my property, and considering this as a part of the green area that he's trying to preserve. So, I asked him even if he was going to put a privacy fence, and he refused to put a privacy fence between those two properties, which is going to have a negative impact also on my property, because at this point, I'm subject to the public. The back of my property is basically open to the public, instead of being right now closed with, with other properties as private properties. There's around six or seven properties, they all acreage, five and up, in this area right here, that would be the only subdivision. We don't mind having a subdivision, but we definitely oppose the conservation subdivision. So, the second thing, which I really was hoping for, that we requested in the past two meetings, to have two, the topography study, because this is the widest area, big cotton Indian Creek. When it rains, it floods. There's a lot of wet areas in this property, so we requested before to have at least a topography study, so as the board can be aware of how much wet area, which will allow the builder to see how many, how many houses can he put. The second thing with a traffic study, that we also requested to be, because this area is considered one of the very dangerous areas, this traffic light, it's fifty-five miles per hour, people come flying for Hemp Road, they go down a valley, and then they go up a hill, flying seventy-five miles per hour, all of a sudden, they see a traffic light in front of them. I can mention accident, and I'm talking about fatal accident, not a fender bender, October twenty-eighth, November third, November fourteenth, December eleventh, when this accident happened, it basically blocked all the highways, starting from Hemp Hill up till, going up to Miller's Mill. We have another subdivision that's going to be open in Miller's Mill, and that will make Flat Rock Road also a busy road. So, definitely a traffic study needs to be done. I have also the rest of my neighbors, so I leave some more time for them, and thanks for listening.
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak in opposition?
My name is Pam Atkinson, I live at nine twenty-five Highway one thirty-eight East, Stockbridge. I don't live as close to this area with the subdivisions proposed as Mike, but we live down closer to where the bridge is, for the creek, and that road is so overloaded now, it's just amazing to me that anybody would consider this, but if you have fifty homes, you're looking at, at least another hundred cars that you're adding to an already completely over flooded road, and the, when seventy-five backs up, we get tractor-trailers on top of just regular traffic. There's Woodland School, there's school, there's young drivers that are driving on this road to get to school. There's a lot to consider, and I am all for progress, I think areas should develop, but it's up to the zoning committees to develop a county in such a way that it's developed successfully. You don't want to get the roads so over flooded, it's amazing to me that this would be considered without a traffic study at least, because we, we live there, we see the fatalities. So, if there's going to be a widening of that road, you might want to look up how many fatalities happened the last time they widened that bridge. It was right at our driveway, I know of, I think, two or maybe three, just from widening that bridge. So, there's a lot to consider when it rains, at that point, when they widen that bridge, they had an S formation in the middle of that road, which was, I guess, the only way they could do it, I don't know, I assume they tried to go at it the safest way, but if you add as many cars on that road as you have with all those subdivisions going over Miller's Mill, and then you add this right there at a red light, it's just amazing to me that it would even be considered, but it is being considered, and we've talked about all this before, it falls on deaf ears, but you know, if you're the one that has the young driver that is a fatality on that road, you would consider this an outrage. If you're just a person that's helping the developer line his pockets and make more money, you probably wouldn't care, but for the community, I mean, the zoning committee's here to commit, to consider the community as well as the developers and the progress in the county. So, I just wish you'd consider trying to get the roads ready for this area to be developed before it develops. Thank you.
Okay, we got two minutes and fifty-two seconds, is there anyone else that would like to come up and, and speak for the last two minutes and fifty-two seconds?
Good evening, my name is John Price.
Can you stand in front of the microphone?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I live at nine twenty-two Highway one thirty-eight East, I'm near the bridge, over the years, we've been there thirty-four years, I guess, and anyway, we've lost three different mailboxes to three different accidents that were really bad. We're close to the bridge, but we're not right at the bridge. And I was wondering if the septic, you know, I brought up one time, the sewage, there wasn't any sewage there at all, there's no natural gas, which is not an amenity, you know, but I, I just don't, I'm like with Ms. Pam, I, I don't know how it's going to, the traffic-wise, I don't know how it's going to handle it, I really don't. It's a safety issue, it's a big safety issue, and there needs to be something reported and done about it. Thank you.
Got one minute and fifty-eight seconds, would anyone else like to come up and speak in opposition? Got 1 minute and 58 seconds. Would anyone else like to come up and speak in opposition? Okay, if are there any questions from the board? Stacy, is there a traffic impact study that has been done with regards to this development?
The traffic impact study is something that the Unified Land Development Code will require. If the number of lots meets their threshold, and that would be done as part of the development of the subject property.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I can come back up, please. So there will be a traffic impact study for those who are concerned?
Yes, Commissioner, and if 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 you would like, we could certainly add a condition that says the traffic impact study will be completed, and then we wouldn't have to worry with whether it actually meets the threshold of the ULDC or not. We would have that assurance that that traffic impact study will happen.
And I think it should be added to it as well.
Okay.
And if I may, since it's on a state highway, the Georgia DOT also requires something called an ICE study, which is an intersection control evaluation study that helps determine the size of the intersection and the geometric design of that intersection. So this, that's already required, whether it's a condition or not. But in addition to that, that's fine. I mean, to add that, I'm saying there's several levels of scrutiny and review that this has to go through in addition to just the county.
Well, one of the questions I'd like for you to answer is the gentleman made reference to utilities. Would you please describe the type of utilities you're proposing to put into the subdivision and the type?
There'll be public water and public sewer, no septic tanks. So this will all be sewer and water provided by Henry County Water Authority. The applicant has already secured an easement from Bella Landing for the sewer connection there, and then the water will tie it to the existing water main that's in Highway 138. Short of that, it would just be your wire-based utilities would be the balance of that, high-speed internet and cable, TV, and telephone and electric.
And also, would you put back up your your plan for the subdivision to see the flood areas as well?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a flood area on the rear of this proposed subdivision, correct?
Yes, ma'am. This area where this kind of that heavy line is there delineates the flood zone. And then there's a wetland zone inside of that that's kind of right over here. So we've got our trail in the floodplain, but out of the protected wetland areas. So it's in an area that's still usable for passive recreation, just not for building houses or anything like that. But the study, the FEMA, it's a FEMA floodplain. It was studied, Henry County initiated the study, and FEMA adopted it in 2016, I think, as gospel. So it is a studied stream. We know exactly where the floodplain is. Nothing that we're doing is developing inside of that.
Nothing you're doing would disturb that?
No, ma'am.
And you do have the runoff going towards your retention pond, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That pond will be a filtration pond.
For the protection of the homes in that area.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. And there are a couple things that Stacy mentioned that's in the documents. But Stacy, I guess we should just mention them on record as well. One of the things that we talked about, that 20% of the homes will be all brick. The other will be available for upgrade to brick. We want a three-feet water table around all homes regardless of of any other façades that are on there as well. The front of the areas, we are allowing them to be designed in the area of a craftsman's type home to receive some of the additional colors and variations on the homes as well. One of them mentioned the buffer between their property and this subdivision. And I'm not sure what the footage he said it would be, but what is that buffer line between the property and this subdivision that the gentleman was concerned about?
It's a 50-foot buffer that is on the on the two sides of the property, and a 100-foot buffer along Highway 138.
Okay.
So can you show me on the map where you're standing?
There's a 50-foot buffer here and here, and then 100-foot buffer that runs there along 138.
And where is this property in conjunction to this?
I believe it's this right here. Thank you.
That buffer, is it really contained with some type of natural
Yes, ma'am.
area between the two?
Yes, ma'am. It's an, and I believe it's a, the code requires it to be an undisturbed buffer, which means all of the grading and everything would happen outside of that buffer. So it will remain as is.
Okay. The request was to make sure that its entrance is a grand entrance, one that has some type of monument sign, and that will look very similar to a gated community. Was that agreed upon in our paperwork as well, Stacy?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was. Sorry.
In addition to that, it was requested that this group give up at least one of their lots for a family center. And when I say center, not a building, but a pavilion, that pavilion should be at least a 16 by 16 for an area for families to have outings at as well. And that should be somewhere around, I think there's lot 19, if I'm looking correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
And a play area for the children. In addition to that, it was requested that the green-looking strip between the back of the houses, that a natural buffer be between those houses so you won't just have house, the back door and backyards to each other, but a natural barrier be placed there, be it hedges, be it some type of short trees. So there will be a natural barrier between those houses as well. And that should be in our documentation as well, Stacy.
Yes, ma'am. That's condition 20.
Thank you. We had agreed upon 2,500 square feet of heated space here. Of course, there would be an option for upgrades for those who want to go up to 3,000 square feet in an upgrade situation. And I was trying to make sure we answered the questions that were brought before us by the gentleman and the gentleman and the lady that came before us. And I think we just did that. I have spent quite a bit of time with this group, looking at this particular subdivision and what they would bring to the community. I know that their traffic is a concern. Traffic is a concern everywhere. Traffic is definitely a concern everywhere. I'm not ignoring that. And we would have to look at what upgrades we can do in that area like we're doing all over the county when it comes to infrastructure and improving our roads and deciding where to put turn lanes and deciding what roads will have to be expanded. And that will be done for this area as well. So it's not that we're overlooking your concern about traffic. It is everywhere. I do understand that the Woodland High School area has a lot of teenagers going to and fro in that area. But 138, if I remember, is a state road?
Yes, ma'am.
And the problem with 138 is owned by the state. The state has to determine what improvements can and cannot be in that area. The county cannot do that. I wish we could, but we cannot control what the state does with that area. And that little roundabout pad that they have up there going to Woodland, that was a state invention. It was not a county invention. They did that. The one that the county did is a nice one at Hemlock, the one that we designed and put there as the county. So that's something we cannot control directly. We can call and have some influence, and believe me, we would do our best to call and try to have some influence as to what the state would do to improve that area. And I think I've addressed the concerns here. I will say again, the applicant is putting forth an effort to bring a high-quality home to this area with the finishes internally and externally. I have been impressed with that, and I think this would be a very good subdivision with homes beginning in the hot 3s going to $400,000, which will help the the homes around it to maintain its property value and to increase its property values as well. We need to do the best we can to be good neighbors, and if anyone feel like we can, want to talk with us after this to see if there are other improvements that we can offer, to be good neighbors. I don't want them to just throw something up because it's approved or disapproved, but we need to learn how to be good neighbors wherever we go. So with that, ma'am and chair, I'm ready to put forth a motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to put forth a motion to approve this development.
Okay, motion. Can we get a second? Second from Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? Commissioner Wilson?
My concern of these rezonings that come before us, is a couple of years ago, we, the board directed staff to have an impact study done. And I think it was, I think it was about $70,000. Is that correct? So the consultant come back with some recommendations of increasing impact fees for transportation, adding that to the impact fees, and increasing the impact fees for public safety. We have not approved that yet. And I think it's important for this board to revisit, to approve those impact fees before we start continuing to to approve these subdivisions or any development in this county.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This is a discussion item only, HC-CODE, code-am-22-01, an ordinance by Henry County to amend the Henry County Code of Ordinance regarding the regulation of the parking of commercial vehicles and for other purposes countywide.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This is a discussion item for tonight, but we do plan to come back March 1st with a final for final adoption. Additionally, we will bring back not only a ULDC amendment, but also the Henry County Code of Ordinance change. So those two will mirror each other so we can take care of commercial vehicle parking all at once versus one tonight and one on another night. So we need 15 days to advertise for the ULDC amendment, so we'll bring that back at the same time for adoption. Commissioner Holmes did ask us to bring forth the ordinance addressing the going issue of commercial vehicle parking, or better known as truck parking. Currently, we do not allow truck parking as there's no provision in our code. However, the interpretation has been that since there's no provision for truck parking, then it is prohibited. The interpretation has been upheld in court, but there's a need to clarify what is allowed and what is prohibited. The ordinance will outline these five items on the on the screen. It would help us establish definitions of commercial and agricultural purpose vehicles, allow for specified agricultural vehicles and equipment in certain residential areas, regulate parking, keeping and storing of commercial vehicles in non-residential areas, and regulation of overnight parking, keeping and storing of vehicles in non-residential areas as well. And finally, it will establish a penalty for violations of the ordinance. The ordinance will provide clear guidance for code enforcement. So when they go out and regulate or have issues with truck parking, because right now, again, we don't necessarily have a provision for that. And as you will see in your in your notebooks, the detailed, the details of the ordinance, and if there's any questions or concerns, please feel free to tell me tonight and or email so that we can add it before the March 1st meeting. And I will ask any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Holmes?
I just want to thank you guys for bringing this forward. This has, this is starting to become a huge problem. I know up in my area, on some of the, in some of the smaller communities, we have trucks parking everywhere. We have trucks parking in in grocery store parking lots and, and, you know, staying there for for weeks at a time. So I appreciate the county management bringing this forward, and I look forward to hopefully adopting this in the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You said that the resolution will be available
Yes.
to be presented to the board on March 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
Due to having to advertise is why we're not voting tonight.
Correct. So the being ULDC has to be advertised, but you do have the resolution that has been started in your packet, and we'll mirror that information into the ULDC.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you for the presentation. Next item on the agenda is RZ-19-16. This is a resolution vote only. Public hearing was held on January 19, 2022, at the BLC meeting, LGS Holding Group.
Good evening, Madam Chair. And just as you stated, that that hearing that was required was held at this time, or at that time, was for the purpose of trying to reach some agreement with the applicant for three different major points that were disagreed upon. And we're very proud to say that we were able to accomplish that. At your seats, there is a handout. The the highlighted areas indicate those two conditions that have been changed since that the exhibits were put out. But that was the very last item, which was the point of disagreement. So I'm very happy to say that we're at full agreement now, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, this is in, Commissioner Clemens, do you have any additional questions, comments? Turn it over to you.
I just want to make sure that the board did get a copy of it. And just to state publicly what the changes were, number 18, we had asked that the night of the meeting, that all of the homes be a minimum of 2,400 square feet. We had three-sided brick on the houses, and the applicant requested that only 50% be 2,400 and the other 50% be 2,000. And in compromise for that, we made 100% of all the houses, all brick homes. So that was a change. So number 18 states that 2,450%, 2,050%. And 19, I've asked staff to scratch out up to 20% of each elevation, maybe of a different accent material. It should simply say all single-family homes shall be four-sided bricks or stone. Those are the only changes. Chair, on 29, we had asked for 150 dwelling units to be constructed before CO, and they asked for it to be 175 units. And those are the three changes. And I would ask the board to approve it with those changes.
We've got a motion on the floor. Heard the changes that Commissioner Clemens stated into the record. Can I get a second? A second, Commissioner Holmes. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Wilson?
Stacy, for the viewers, could you state how many units are involved in this development?
Yes, sir. There are approximately 1,150 units that will be coming in, mixture of both townhouses and single families.
Okay, thank you. So that's where the impact fees would come in and help us with the impact for our community as well. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, this is a 10-year project. They can only do 175 units a year. So this is a 10-year project, and I think it's important that we state that this will not happen at one time, and it has to be over a 10-year period. And if they're not complete with it, then it will convert back to its original zoning of residential agriculture.
All right. And Commissioner Wilson, I hear you. We do need to bring back, and it will be brought back in one of, in the, on one of our March meetings with regards to the impact fees, because that's something that needs to be addressed. As we continue to build, we have to continue to add public safety and 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 facilities such as parks in these communities as well. So we do need to address increasing impact fees. So that is something that will be brought back. If there are no other further questions or discussion on this, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public comments. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. We have several minutes that's on, on, that needs to be approved January 5th, January 14th, January 19th, our mid-year budget workshop, and then the actual BLC. Can I get a motion to approve all minutes listed? Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Clemens. No discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. We have, the board received an email with regards to We have um, the board received an email with regards to the appointment to replace the uh vacated seat of Commissioner Cannon. And um I'd like to ask our county attorney to um read the statute with regards to what we're required to do as a board.
Senate Bill twenty-two requires if, at the time the vacancy occur-
Can you, can you hear me? Can't hear you.
Sorry, let's try this one. Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, Senate Bill twenty-two requires that if the, at the time of a vacancy occurs, if there are less than three hundred and sixty days until the date of the next general election, a qualified successor from the district in which the vacancy occurred should be appointed by the remaining members of the board to serve until the first day of January following the next general election. Such appointment shall be made from a list of nominees provided by the County Executive Committee of the political party of which the vacated board member was the candidate at the last general election in which the board seat was up for election. On February the first, twenty twenty-two, uh at the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two meeting, District Three Commissioner Dre- uh Greg Cannon resigned from the Board of Commissioners. Uh at the last general election for District Three, a member of the Republican Party won the general election. On February the eleventh, twenty twelve, Henry County's um Republican chair provided a list of two individuals um uh as candidates, Vicky Consaglio and Darrell Winston Anglin III. Hopefully that's correct. So those, that is the list for which the Board of Commissioners would have to vote.
So only two names were presented?
Only two names were provided.
Okay. So then um do I need to ask for a motion to select one of those?
Yeah, yeah, she need to open the floor to allow a motion to vote for either candidate at the board, so she uses to vote.
I'd like to open the floor for a motion for either one of those candidates.
Question.
Yes.
Would the candidates be allowed to speak to us for a moment, or is that allowed and not allowed?
Uh just completely, go to the chair.
I don't have a problem with-
I don't know if the candidates are both here, but-
Are they?
Are the candidates here? Come forward, please.
Just wanted to hear from him, his commitment to the job and what he brings to the table, or something of that nature.
So my family's been here for a number of years.
Introduce yourself, tell us who you are.
Darrell W. Anglin III.
Okay.
So thank you, appreciate that. Uh family's been here from this county for a number of years. It really is just an honor to be able to stand here and serve a community that my family's been a part of since I was a child. So my commitment is to the community, because the community has been committed to my family as well. Thank you.
Is the other candidate here?
Is Vicky Consagla, Consaglio here? I will add that the um, along with the list of names, two um resumes were sent um by the uh the Henry County Republican Party that describes each candidate. So there's also a description here uh for Ms. Vicky Consiglio, provided by the Republican Party.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept one of these, opening up for a motion? So I can't get a motion, what are our next steps?
Where um there is no vote by the Board of Commissioners, Senate Bill three oh six, in the event that a majority of the board does not vote to appoint a person to fill a vacancy within the time provided in the subsection, the chairperson shall then immediately appoint a qualified person from the list of nominations provided pursuant to the subsection to fill such a vacancy. So at this time, the chair can appoint uh either of the two candidates provided by the Republican Parties.
Yes, ma'am.
Um in my opinion, the fact that someone didn't show up at the meetings tonight to see what is going on should be in consideration. Uh I don't know either candidates, but it, you know, one is here and one's not. We did, I did receive your email with the information in there. And I think this board needs to make a decision tonight, so we can move forward. That's just my comment on it.
We had the opposition, opportunity for a motion, uh could not get a motion, so therefore, um are you saying state law says that the chair shall? I just want to make sure.
Shall appoint someone from the list provided by the Republican Party.
Okay, and I'm not going to do anything to violate state law, so therefore, uh I would like to appoint Mr. Anglin uh for District Three Commissioner.
Congratulations, Mr. Anglin.
Uh our next upcoming meeting uh is March first at nine AM and March fifteenth at six thirty PM. Meetings adjourned.